Good evening. Today is Tuesday, May eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. I am Heather Pepley, Clerk for the City of Manistee. The City Council's May eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one regular meeting being conducted remotely where all members of the City Council are in separate locations and not at the City Hall Council chambers will be called to order by Mayor Rogers Zalinski shortly. As always, this meeting is being recorded and will be broadcast on Manistee TV cable channels one eighty-nine and one ninety and available at manistetv.org. City Council and city staff will have video and audio available for this meeting. Members of the public will be audio only. The microphones of all members of the City Council, City Manager, City Attorney, and City Clerk will always be live unless there's an audio disruption. Mayor Zalinski, we are ready to proceed with the meeting.
Thank you, Heather. I'll call the meeting to order. Please take the roll.
Councilmember Bachman?
Here from my home in Manistee.
Councilmember Beaton?
I'm here. I'm at on Hughes Street in Manistee.
Mayor Zalinski?
Here, home at my home in Manistee.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Here, Manistee.
Mayor Protem Schmansky?
Here, Manistee, Michigan.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Here at my home in Manistee.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Here in Manistee.
City Manager?
Here.
City Attorney?
Here.
Deputy Clerk?
Here.
City Assessor?
Here.
DPW Director?
Here.
Finance Director?
Here.
Planning and zoning?
Here.
Police Chief?
Here.
Fire Chief?
Here.
City Engineer?
Here.
Roll call complete.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Citizens' comments on agenda-related items. Each person waiting in the virtual waiting room will be called individually by the City Clerk by the last four digits of the telephone number. Individuals, we ask if they have a comment or if they are passing. It's very important that those giving comments have a good phone connection and no sound or noise in the background, such as television and all forms of audio should be muted. Otherwise, there will be disruptive audio. If the issue cannot be corrected by the caller, we'll move on to the next person on the line. Tonight, meeting discussion topics are on the consent agendas, approval of minutes, payroll invoices, notification regarding next work session, consideration of two thousand and twenty-one Catamaran Race Association of Michigan to hold its annual Manistee Regatta on August fifth through the eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. Other agenda items: consideration of a social district located downtown Manistee, consideration of renewing a five-year contract for assessing services with Great Lake Assessing Incorporated, and designating Marlene Wheatstone as City Assessor. Consideration of approving a three-year mooring agreement with Harbors Tours LLC, consideration of Downtown Authority two thousand and twenty-one, twenty, 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 twenty-one physical year budget amendments, consideration of application to boards and commissions, and report from the Department of Public Works, and the Engineer of Record, and a presentation by Housing North. We'll now take public comments, Heather.
Hey, if you're calling in from a telephone and would like to make a comment, please press star nine to raise your hand. And if you're joining us, oh, here's one. Telephone number seven, four, three, five. Please press star six to unmute yourself and state your name and address.
This is James Bootrey, twelve forty-nine Maple Road, Manistee, Michigan, and DDA Board Member. I am calling in to basically just leave a comment on the social district. I'd like to just say that I think this would be a great asset downtown. I think it's very important for our downtown. For me, as a business owner downtown, owning a liquor store, I can't, you know, be directly involved in it. I can't serve alcohol. I have patrons coming into my store with it. However, I do think it would be a benefit to my business and other businesses downtown to create this lively, energetic atmosphere to our downtown area. I'll leave my comment at that. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment? And if you're calling in, press star nine to raise your hand. If you are on a computer or iPad, please go ahead and unmute yourself and I'll know that you are ready to speak. One more chance. Public comments. Seeing none?
Thank you, Heather. Consent agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the City Manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval of minutes, payroll invoices, notification regarding next works, consideration of the two thousand and twenty-one Catamaran Racing Association of Michigan's annual Manistee Regatta on August fifth through the eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. Is there any council members who would like something removed from the consent agenda? Nope. Hearing none at this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Bachman?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schmansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none. New business: consideration of a social district located downtown Manistee. The Downtown Development Authority would like to request the activation of a social district. That's allowed under the Michigan Public Act one twenty-four of two thousand and twenty, which was signed into law on July first, two thousand and twenty. This will allow the City of Manistee to establish a social district within common areas where two or more continuous licensed establishments could sell alcohol, very alcoholic beverages in special cups to be taken out into the designated common area for consumption. At this time, council could take action to adopt a resolution to support the establishment of a social district in downtown Manistee. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
The motion.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to support. Any discussion?
I have a question. Um, which parcels are going to be connected in a social district? I'm thinking, for example, I was curious whether the Elks and, of course, a new pizza place isn't open yet, but would they be a district?
Mr. Taylor?
I'm going to defer to the DDA. Either Stacy or Christine is on the on the call here.
Hi, councilmembers. I'll take that for the DDA. Yes, councilmember Beaton, they could be included, but as of right now, that district includes the five businesses that we have listed, the restaurants. We are able to add into the district, and I actually just ran into Mr. Fracano before this meeting today. So we do have, if you want me to, I'd be happy to list the restaurants that would fall into that district, and we have included a map in the packet that was sent in with our application that has that, that would include those businesses.
Okay.
Stacy, this is Mick Schmansky. Is there a reason why we wouldn't go east to the end of the Riverwalk to include the American Legion?
Well, the highway poses a little bit more of a challenge. So what we thought we would do initially is get the district started, and then we can work on that because approval of council is just the first step in this. Then we have to go to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission for approval. Then we have to have the businesses submit their own license to get approval, and then the signage, the cups, and kind of the whole branding. So it's, there's a lot of steps in the process. So absolutely, I think down the road, we can work on that to get that, to look at getting that extended.
Yeah, and my thought would be that, you know, it wouldn't have to go over the highway. In fact, I would think that it would probably not be the right thing, but certainly the Riverwalk. And again, I'm still hopeful that Spirit of the Woods Hotel will be on that corner, which would be a perfect link in between so that you'd have, you know, a kind of a start and a finish line across the downtown area of Manistee.
And our hope would be that would be in addition to it as well. So I think when we, the team worked on this application, we looked at, you know, the original district that we established to get that started, and then we can further go from there because obviously the businesses that are included are very excited. I just got an email this afternoon from Connie Freiberg, owner of the Blue Fish, so she's very excited that this will hopefully take effect and we can start getting more people into downtown, which will help the restaurants, the retailers, and just create that vibrancy that we're looking for.
Well, I think it's a great idea, especially I think what we've learned through COVID. Having, you know, the more outdoor space we can have for our downtown, the better.
Anybody else? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman?
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schmansky?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of renewing a five-year contract for assessing services with Great Lakes Assessing Incorporated and designating Marlene Wheatstone as City Advisor. The city entered into a five-year contract on June sixteenth with Great Lakes Assessing Incorporated. The contract is expiring. The city has negotiated a new five-year agreement to provide assessing services. The city attorney has reviewed the approved and approved the agreement. At this time, council could take action to enter into a five-year contract with assessing services of Great Lakes Assessing Incorporated and designate Marlene Wheatstone as a city assessor. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second it, Bachman.
Yeah.
Lauren? Lauren, did you get all we needed?
I did. Thank you.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schmansky?
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of approving a three-year mooring agreement with Harbors Tours LLC. Harbors Tours LLC has relocated its vessel, the Princess, to the Manistee Harbor. The Princess will operate commercially from a location within the city marina along the Riverwalk. A mooring agreement has been prepared by the city attorney to define the terms of the agreement. At this time, council could take action to approve the mooring agreement with Harbors Tours LLC and authorize the Marin City Clerk to execute the documents. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion, Schmansky.
Is there support?
I'll second.
The motion is supported. Any discussion?
This is just a random question. Can they, can they change the name from Luddington to Manistee, or is that asking too much?
I believe I heard that process. Mr. Taylor, am I correct?
I don't know if they are or not. Jeff, do you have any information on that?
Yeah, the the process is a quite lengthy process, and so he has, I believe, the captain or the owner has begun the process, but he may just change the signage on the vessel until that happens.
Oh, okay. I wanted to make sure he was interested in doing that.
He is interested.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else?
Is the city happy with the agreement? Do you think it's fair and serves the long-term benefits of the marina?
I, in my opinion, the answer is yes to each of those questions. It is a stable fixed income for the marina. They will be a large fuel customer for us. The nature of the business that they run shouldn't interfere with the setting of the marina and the other customers that are there. However, it will be a pretty large draw to the downtown and the Riverwalk just through all the passengers and all the bookings that they have, and they've already started to employ local people. So it feels like a win all around at this point.
Thank you.
This is Grabowski. The only thing I don't like is it says we're approving a mooring agreement. We don't even know what it is, except what Jeff just told us. It'd be nice in the next time we could get a copy of it so we know what we're authorizing.
Wasn't it in the package?
Yeah.
It wasn't.
It shows the slipped rental payments and everything.
Okay, I didn't get that.
It's all over, a little over five grand a year for that, plus they have to buy gas at the marina and use a sewage pump out there and pay for that as well.
Yep.
Anybody else? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schmansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of Downtown Development Authority, two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one physical year budget amendment. The DDA needs to correct a budget line item for the physical year two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one budget to ensure actual expenses do not exceed the current budget. Expenditures were approved and budgeted in the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty physical year for dumpster corrals in the DDA district, but the DDA was not billed until the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one physical year. At this time, council could take action to amend the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one physical year budget to correct current approved expenditures. Is there a motion?
Schmansky, I'll make that motion. Bachman, second it.
We have a motion to support. Any discussion? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schmansky?
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of applications to boards and commission, commissions. The City Clerk has taken action to advertise vacancies on the Compensation Commission, Historic District Commission, Bay Commission, Pre-Commission, and the Zoning Board of Appeals. Where all appointments require a motion, a second, and council vote of support. Nominations for council appointments do not require a second. After all nominations are made, council votes on a nominee until one nominee receives majority support. The following applications have been received. Pre-Commission. There's four-year, four-year vac, four vacancies, three terms ending twelve thirty-one twenty-two, and one term ending twelve thirty-one twenty-three. This is a mayor oil appointment. I'd like to appoint Samples, Zachary Samples, to the term ending twelve thirty-one twenty-three. Is there support?
Support from Schmansky.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Grabowski has seconded.
I have support in a second. Please take the roll.
Mayor Protem Schmansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Zoning Board of Appeals, there's one vacancy. Alternate term ending five thirty-one twenty-four. Applicants shall be, shall be a representative of the population distribution and of the various interests present in the city. This is a mayorial appointment. I'd like to appoint Dennis R. Johnson, four, six, four, Fifth Street, to the term ending five thirty-one twenty-four. Is there support?
Oh, support it.
Second?
I got Bachman.
I have support in a second. Please take the roll.
Councilmember Bachman?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schmansky?
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Notices, communications, and announcements. A report from a depart, from a department. Tonight, we'll have a report from the Department of Public Works and Engineer of Record. We'll also have a report from Housing North. We'll start out with Mr. McCullough.
Okay, I'm gonna see if I can share my screen. So I had a conversation with Sean Middleton from the Engineer of Record, and he asked that I keep this very brief so that he could take up the rest of the evening with his presentation. So we'll go through this a little bit abbreviated. What makes up Public Works in Manistee? That's an interesting question because almost every community has a little variation on that, but currently, the Public Works in Manistee makes up the utilities, fleet maintenance, the parks, refuse, the street system, and now the marina. The Public Works is made up of three non-union employees, myself, the Director of Utilities, and Kathy Boyle, the Administrative Assistant. We have twelve full-time people in the Street Department. Six of those are the dedicated towards the bridge tending, two full-time employees in the parks, five at the, I'm sorry, eight full-time in the utilities, which makes up twenty-five full-time employees in the Public Works. And then our goal is to hire three part-time in the streets, eight part-time in the parks, and about five part-time in the marina, which adds sixteen seasonal employees. So during the summer, we peak at about forty-one positions. The administration portion fields hundreds of phone calls literally every day, answering questions, scheduling items for the public. We do a lot of project management stuff with all of our street paving, various grant applications and administrations, projects such as last year's Hastings Street reconstruction and Storm Sewer, and Hughes Street, First Street, Second Avenue in that area with all the road reconstruction and utility improvements. We had the pipelining, five miles of pipelining that we did last year, the construction of the dumpster corrals, which were paid for by the DDA, working on the RD-two conveyance and the clean water recovery, which is the storage and the upgrades to the treatment plant. I'm sure that Sean will hit on those a little bit more. Tomorrow, we're opening up bids for the Jackson Van Buren Water Main improvements and street reconstruction, as well as reconstructing Eighth Street from US thirty-one to Hopkins. We have over fourteen different budgets that we touch within the Public Works Department. We have a lot of reporting with the State of Michigan, both at MDOT and Eagle. We do a lot of purchasing and planning. There's probably, on average, of a hundred and fifty invoices that go through the Public Works on a weekly basis. As of late, there's been a tremendous amount of development activity, and we work with both the Chambers staff, but also closely with the other department heads in the planning and zoning to do plan reviews and provide information to assist with developers and their planning. Few of the major ones that we've worked on this year were the Maple Ridge out in Manistee Township. They are now connected to our water system and actually have extended our water system to serve that development. The Hillcrest Development on Ford Street, they have an extension of city water and sewer within that project, and then, of course, the Lakeshore Hotel, which we did a lot of planning meetings for that project. In the Street Department, we complete winter maintenance activities, all the street maintenance through the summer. We've got a sidewalk replacement program, and as you're aware, we're gonna begin a pilot program once the new budget kicks in, where we do a cost sharing with residents to replace sidewalks in front of their, or property owners in front of their properties that may not be quick enough for what the normal repair and replacement program we have. We're responsible for all the parking lots within the city. The forestry work is a large piece of work that we do in maintaining, trimming, and removing trees, chipping brush, that sort of thing. The US thirty-one contract for maintenance, as well as the bridge operation of US thirty-one, and then Maple Street as well. We just took delivery of a single-axle plow truck. We ordered that close to a year and a half ago. Right now, the vendors are booked for all, all the semi, the cabin chassis for the entire year of two thousand and twenty-one. So as the economy starts to recover, there's a lot of demand on that equipment. We replaced several pickup trucks, one that was in last year's budget, two that are in this budget this year. I mentioned the sidewalk program, the annual beach maintenance, which is really in addition to what the Parks Department does. The Street Department assists with putting up the snow fence and then leveling of the beaches and getting everything prepared. Salt usage, and then we're conducting vehicle and equipment auction coming up on June tenth. For our sidewalk program, the areas that are, that are shaded and are cross-hatched in the blue are areas where we've completed all the trip hazards where we do the sidewalk cutting, but then also have followed up with the DPW crews to do and remove and replacements. And then the red areas are places where we have completed saw cutting, and if time allows this summer, we'll be following up with the removal and replacements. So we've added some more money to that program as well, and we'll continue going through the city. So you can see we're, we're at probably a little past a third of the overall city in that effort. Again, like I mentioned, we've got the auction coming up. We've got ten city vehicles. I sent a little bit of a breakdown to Thad, which I believe he intends on sharing with you in his weekly update, but there are two police vehicles, two plow trucks, three pickup trucks, the Escape that was used by all of the city staff to go to various training and and so forth, and then the old beach cleaner. And then we also will be auctioning off the van that the Blossom Boulevard had used in the past years. And then for recent communication with Councilman Schmansky, we're gonna auction off the Lion's Water Wagon as well. The timing of that, we, we really wanted to do it last year, but with COVID, we weren't certain that we would get active bids if people couldn't be there to see them, and and we couldn't bring that gathering together. So now with the restrictions being lifted, we're hoping for a very favorable atmosphere, and the money that we make back from that vehicle auction goes right back into the motor pool and gets reinvested in And the money that we make back from that vehicle auction goes right back into the motor pool and gets reinvested in new equipment. We've used this slide for several years, but I think it's really important that when the council's approving those plow trucks, that we are using current technologies and training for our staff so that we're not just getting new equipment, but we're using it in the best fashion that we can for the community. And, you know, over the past seven, six, seven years, we've been able to reduce the amount of salt consumption on the streets by close to fifty percent. It really depends on how the winter treats us. And the sand that we put down in the streets is at least a ninety percent reduction. And we believe that the that the level of service that we're providing is equal, if not greater, than it was before that. So that equates to over fifty-five thousand dollars of straight savings a year for the purchase of salt and sand. But it also reduces the amount of material that gets up into people's lawns and driveways, and it substantially reduces the amount of material that gets into our storm sewers and therefore reduces that means maintenance as well. On the fleet maintenance side and motor pool, we participate very actively and consistently with the motor pool program. We're responsible for the maintenance and repair on over sixty-five pieces of equipment and vehicles. We are getting better and better and stronger with our preventative maintenance plan and pushing out the life of the vehicles. I will say that that every vehicle that we are auctioning off, with the exception of one, has some severe damage to it, such as a transmission, a bad engine. So both on the police side and on the public works equipment that we're getting rid of, we've completely used up their useful life. We also are engaged in three different lease programs where we are getting equipment at a much cheaper rate than if we bought those outright. And those have been pretty successful. So as long as those opportunities are available, we'll continue to take advantage of them. From welding and fabrication, we have really, we've invested in the equipment and therefore the abilities that our fabrication shop can do. And it has saved us a lot of money and reduced the timeliness of our repairs. The truck that's pictured on the screen is actually the old fire truck pickup that I think we received over five years ago from the fire department when they replaced their truck. We were able to put a new engine in that truck and honestly hoped to get another five, six years out of that. And we're in the sixth year now. We replaced the rotted bed that was on the truck. It literally was, it literally fell off the truck. And we purchased an aluminum bed that we will now use for watering, both in the DDA and in Blossom Boulevard. And in the winter, it'll hold a salt box for doing parking lots and so forth. So the good news is when that, when that truck dies, that bed will live another fifteen, twenty years. And we will simply be able to move it to a different vehicle. And then the bottom picture is repairs that we've been assisting the Corps of Engineers with on the First Street Breakwater, the South Breakwater. The Corps has, has completed an engineering review and study and has now made application for construction funds to permanently fix that. But this, they actually posted it on the Corps of Engineer. I think it was either their Facebook site or website, the appreciation for us assisting them. And they paid for all the materials. In the Parks Department, again, we've got over eighteen different properties that were responsible for mowing, annual maintenance and repairs, upgrades. That doesn't include necessarily the nine public restrooms that get cleaned every day. All the trash cans that get emptied on the Riverwalk, the beaches, all the parks and the Olive River Street on a daily basis. During the winter, we set up the ice skating rink. Fortunately, this winter, the weather was perfect, and they had a tremendous amount of usage. Previous years, the mother nature didn't cooperate, but each year we set it up and take it down. We complete the beach cleaning twice a week on each beach. Volunteer activity has been very, has been on an upswing as of late. And so we do a lot to try to work with those groups. And sometimes they actually create a lot of work for us too, but we appreciate their support. And then also all the work that we do in the downtown district. That's just a picture of our, of the rake that we purchased a few years ago. It's working great and has reduced our annual operations cost by at least three to five thousand dollars. We're also responsible for the refuse. As you're aware, we attract out the household hazardous waste. We do still offer recycling and have our partnership with with the Catholic School, and then we still have our mixed container down at that location. We pick up yard waste on a weekly basis, May through October, and we stack and pile and turn. And then each year, we, we run what's, what's prepared and create topsoil out of that. Excuse me, the topsoil, again, has been used more and more by local contractors. The community garden uses it. There's a couple other garden places that have started to purchase it. And there is a worm composting operation that's a startup business that is interested in purchasing our compost for feeding their, their critters. We do offer the monthly bulk item pickup. That's the first pickup of, for each resident each month. And this, we've, each year, we've been trying to do a different recycling event. In past years, we've done tire collection. We've done e-waste. This year, we tried a shredded event where we had the commercial shredders in the parking lot next to the Armory Youth Center. And the concept was if you've got old bills, materials, private stuff that you want to come have it shred. We had very low participation in that last Saturday, so we may not hold that event again. But we'll keep looking for new opportunities for the residents. I joked with Brandon because he didn't go out and take a picture of our blue totes. But the switch to the paper lawn bags has been very successful for us. Residents actually can purchase those cheaper than what we were buying the, the city recycling bags. And the paper bags are breaking down much, much better than the old plastic bags. So that seems to have gone pretty well. And that's a picture of our finished compost when we take all the lawn clippings and grass. And that's probably about after three years, we're ready to screen it and use it. One other thing, I would, we also have a bin down at MCC that's available, that has this soil, and it's available for any resident that wants to come and use it. There's no cost to that. We've tried to make it so that it can't be scooped out with a loader, but people are willing to shovel some up and take it home and use, use it as they, as they wish. In the utilities, I'm just gonna do one slide here because we do a total separate water and sewer utility presentation to council. But in two thousand twenty, we pumped two hundred and fifty-nine million gallons of water. We maintain fifty-three miles of water main, and that number is starting to go up as developments are starting to expand that. We maintain the four water wells and two water towers. On the treatment side, we treated three hundred and ninety million gallons. You can see that there's a hundred and forty million gallons of difference there. And that is the wet weather flows that we receive, mostly through residential footing drains and sumps. And that's why we're proceeding with the wet weather, or wet weather corrective action program. All of that is collected with forty-six miles of sewer, not including filar townships and thirteen pump stations. And of course, we have the treatment plant. Some highlights on the marina. We had impacts from COVID early on from the restrictions on boating. And the state would not allow us to open up the marina until about a month later than we normally would. Tonight, you just approved that tour boat, and I appreciate the question. But I, again, I think it's gonna be a very positive thing for the community and for that business. We are really excited that the restaurant is being renovated adjacent to the marina. And we think that that'll attract a lot of, not just traffic to the restaurant, but a lot of boater traffic as a lot of his facilities are located further down the coast on Lake Michigan. And then I put seasonal employees on, but we, we are actually having issues with attracting seasonal employees in all three of our departments. We are shy, I think, about eight seasonal employees this summer. So we continue to advertise and we'll just manage around what we've got. And with, I would entertain any questions from council.
I have a question about the seasonal employees, Jeff. What are the salaries for, or the hourly rate for seasonal employees in DPW?
Yeah, we tried to keep it a little bit above. Each year, we tried to keep that a little bit above the the minimum wage rate. So we were at ten, or we are at ten dollars for starting and then have added a quarter per hour if you return year after year. And we max that out at a one dollar above the starting wage. The issue is now that all the fast food restaurants and everybody has raised their, their minimum wages up to twelve and twelve dollars an hour or more. And so it's just very hard to compete for, for those people.
Okay, thanks, Jeff.
Jeff, I have a question. You know, a lot of people are discovering that they have a noxic, you know, an invasive species on their properties, especially like the mustard weeds. What's the best way for them to dispose of them? Because we have a regulation that says you're not supposed to put it in your garbage, but yet it doesn't seem to make sense that you would put it into the composting either. Because I'm, I'm assuming that it would just end up spreading even more. So any recommendations for our residents?
Yeah, that, that question actually came up with the Manistee High School. They were doing their end-of-school-year activities, and they had elementary students that were pulling garlic mustard and wanted to know what they should do with it. And so we, we actually asked the question of Republic. And the, the answer is put it in the garbage bags if you've got that invasive species. That's the only way that it'll get disposed of without spreading. If it goes into the compost, there's a chance that it could spread and, and contaminate that soil. The, the Japanese knot wood is a different thing. That is not recommended to cut. And it's illegal to transport that. So each one of those are a little bit different. We have, we work with the Grand Travers of, Thad, you remember the exact name of them. We work with a group out of the Grand Travers region that works on invasive species. And we pay them what I would can, what I would term a nominal amount to treat the fragmities that man-made. And they accept that kind of as a donation. But they have been treating the Japanese knot wood throughout the city on public property. And I'll reach out to them, and they probably have a good link that we could post on our website and Facebook page that would be a resource if people have questions that they could contact them.
It might be a good newspaper article to let people kind of aware. And, and the other suggestion or comment is, you know, a lot of people, when they're, when they're recycling their paper, they go to Catholic Central and they find that the van is closed. So then they're caught with it. Do I dump it on the street in front of the van, or do I take it home with them? So my suggestion or thought is, is it possible that we could schedule days? And, or, or have some kind of mechanism so that people aren't driving over to Catholic Central with a, you know, a car loader or a van load of paper, just to find that the trailer is closed? And then having to be caught with, you know, do I dump it or do I take it home?
Well, I, I will respond that the city does not run that portion of the recycling. They have a coordinator at Manistee Catholic that, that runs that. And I know that, I know that I've, I've seen articles where he's quoted saying, please don't put it out on the ground and take it home. And they, they are trying to streamline that process with volunteers. The COVID had an impact on how many people they could work and how volunteers handled that. And then they're also, they've been able to get a second trailer from PCA, but they're also trying to make the emptying of the trailers, you know, more timely. So I, I, I don't have much, much more information than that.
Okay. But again, if we could, if they would have even a mechanism to let people know, hey, trailer is full, come back tomorrow. Some, you know, again, some kind of communication method would be helpful, I think.
We could pass that on.
Okay, thanks.
Hey, Jeff, I have one more question. Sorry. We're cutting into Sean's time. But I'm, would you please tell me when you're gonna get some signs up, no dogs on beach? And Manmade Lake really needs some signs about littering, picking up after your dog, no cutting of trees. You know, there's, there's some things going on around Manmade Lake that we don't, we don't have any signage up that I know of to at least discourage some people.
Yeah, the, the signs at the beach, we take those down in the fall. They come back up in the spring. So I made a note to make sure that's on our to-do list. The signage at Fifth Avenue Beach, there's a pretty regular group of local residents that report findings to us. We don't have any signage down there because it's such a wide-open park, but that's something we could look into.
Well, I'm worried about Manmade Lake because it's so secluded when you drive back in there.
Right.
That we really need some signs. Can put some up. That would be great.
Anybody else have any questions for Mr. McCullough?
I got two questions real quick. Well, the first one's kind of just from my knowledge. I, I can't even grow grass, so I don't know about this question. But Blossom Boulevard, wouldn't it be more cost-effective to plant flowers there that come back every year?
I know that the committee has looked at do, at doing annuals. The and have, I believe their conclusion has been that, that the super petunias pack the biggest colorful punch.
Okay.
The money and the effort that goes into it.
Okay. And my second question is, so I know that you've been working with volunteers to do stuff like around town, and I know that that can be kind of nerve-wracking sometime, but, but so I've been reading the emails back and forth. And I noticed like the one about the benches, like you, you do that in the winter time. If, if they're willing to do it now, why not let them have at it instead of waiting seven months and letting them sit there the way, in the condition that they are? Like, I know that there's things they can do and they can't do, but I mean, I would use them to the fullest if you're short-staffed right now.
Yeah, and we've, we've had many, I've had many conversations with that group. And, you know, I think like the email that Councilman Beaton sent out, they've, The work that they. Have requested and have been approved for is probably much greater than what even could be accomplished. And there's certain work that when we do those benches, we don't just stain them, you know. Put stain on them while they're on site. We pull them in, we take them apart, we. We go through and refurbish them and and put them back in circulation. And there's, I bet there's. Fifty different benches now in the system. And so, you know, we just routinely rotate those in and out. And that's also work that is done by the union employees. And so I'm trying to be sensitive to. Existing work that we do. And then also providing opportunities for volunteer support on things that maybe we necessarily wouldn't do or. Or don't have the ability to get to. So, you know, we're really trying to find that balance.
Okay.
Hey, Jeff, a couple month ago or so, we talked about the parks and and. We wanted to add another one, and I disagree with that. Are they, you you mentioned in that meeting that you had grills down at the at the shop and all that. Are we going to put any grills that like in Mac? People have asked me about Mac Park. And some of the other parks that don't have a grill. Is it possible to put some in at different places?
Yeah, we do have some of those grills in stock and. I'm, I believe the co-chair of the Parks Commission is is on the meeting, so they've got a meeting this Thursday and. We, they, I, what the Parks Commission has done is kind of divvied up all the parks and assigned. Parks Commission members to go and kind of review them and bring back observations and recommendations. So. We can work with the parks to kind of come up with a recommended list of where there where we could add grills. And we certainly could get those installed.
Good.
Anybody else? Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. Middleton, you're up. Jeff took most of the time, so you only got about thirty seconds.
Yeah, thanks for the brief presentation, Jeff. I'll try and share my screen here. Just let me know if you can see it, okay?
Not yet. Well, you used up all your time, Sean, so.
Thank you, Sean.
Your button, that always helps.
Looks like we got something.
Okay.
Starting anyway.
Got to open the presentation again. Closed on me, so. I am losing, using all my time up here. About now, is that?
Good, we got it.
Okay. Okay, so I'm Sean Middleton with Spicer Group. Presenting our annual update for the City of Manistee Engineer of Record. I guess it's more than just an annual update. We did not present last year, so this is a two year. Window, and I promise you my presentation will not be twice as long.
You take as much time as you need, Sean.
So I'm just going to start out with our our staff. I certainly won't go through all our staff members, but. We're very lucky to have a talented group of local people working out of this Manistee office. We've got eight eight. Staff members that are working out of Manistee either full or part time. And we have two interns that'll be joining us this summer. In addition to our Manistee staff, we're we're lucky enough to that. We can really leverage on our company as a whole. We have. Our company is about two hundred and forty people at in the peak of summer, and we have all our inspectors on staff. We've got five offices across the state and a Atlanta office in Georgia, but um. We can, we can pull from any of those offices or any of the people, but these people kind of shown here. Are some of the key key ones that work in Manistee on a pretty regular basis. And again. I won't go through all the names, but it covers all the various facets of infrastructure. From roads to wastewater to water to construction to grants. As I think most of you are aware, we're at three oh two and three oh four River Street, our offices. We leased the space here. We've been kind of just steadily growing our office space and our workstations over the years. We still have capacity, but we're getting closer and closer to filling the building up. Over the last year, we really haven't done a lot in terms of the office. We're just happy to get back to some sense of normalcy with. In our opinion, COVID kind of coming on the backside here and being able to utilize the office like we we used to several years ago. Spicer's always been a big supporter of the community. It's no different here in Manistee. I work with Chris in our office the best we can to try and support. Various organizations and activities. This is kind of a sample of the last couple of years, some of the places, organization and events we've we've sponsored. Can't always, you know, give everything everybody wants or hit everybody, but we do the best we can to support the community. So on the engineering side, backwards here, on the engineering side, we. We basically do two things for the city where we do what we refer to as general engineering consulting work. And that's, you know, attending meetings, staff meetings, council meetings. We do site plan reviews. And just a lot of general consultation where we're answering questions. You might get a question from Rick or Bruce or Jeff and or get asked to kind of track something down, a grant. Funding source. And we do that kind of, that's happening all the time daily. The other, the other side of the corn coin is our engineering projects. And basically, that's a specific project where we'll be involved. From conceptual layout, planning, survey, preliminary design permitting. Through final design into bidding, selecting a contractor, setting up contracts. And then into construction where we'll inspect, do staking. Into general construction administration, all the way to as built plans and contract documents that they get filed with the city. This is some of the projects we've worked on in the last several years, couple of years. I certainly will not be going through all these, but I am going to hit on a couple of the the larger ones we've been working on recently. I'm going to start with one you're familiar with because we've been working on. It's the lining project. We've got the majority of the work done. There's some extra work that'll be done this spring because we had some extra dollars in the contracts. We're kind of stretching out the work. We did a pilot project in two thousand and eighteen to learn some things. Then in twenty twenty, we. We did the majority of the sewer lining. We've lined about approaching six miles of sewer, which is eleven, twelve percent of the city's overall system. And about twenty percent of the city sewers that were rated as poor. Similarly, the we did manhole lining, which was about nine percent of the manholes, wastewater manholes in the city. Of which fifteen, there was fifteen percent of the brick manholes, which are a lot more susceptible, you know, to failure. We get two, we're really getting two things out of this work. One, we're getting a structural integrity of the pipe is greatly improved. Basically, basically, these liners. Can go in, and if the host pipe completely fails around it, this pipe can support all the load. And it'll have a design life of fifty to a hundred years. So we get a lot of bang for the buck and we don't have to excavate. Additionally, this is addressing our inflow and infiltration problem that we have. We we it helps stop cracks and joints and all those places you'd expect in the main line to be leaking. But probably. As important or more important, as we go through this process, we identify which leads are truly coming from a home or commercial facility. That's the wastewater lead. It's not uncommon to have a couple, two, three, four leads in penetrating a pipe in front of a home. And really only one of those is serving wastewater. So as part of our process here, we go through and we've been eliminating. All those not necessarily leads from the pipe, which is just really just a source of INI. You know, we engineers like our metrics, just a couple of quick things. Now, we we tell that we follow flows at the plant on a monthly basis, working with Rick. And this graph here, just real quickly, is looking at every month since January of eighteen. The blue lines are wastewater treatment plant flows. The green is estimated inflow and infiltration. We estimate that based on what we see at the plant. And what the billings are, we're seeing at City Hall with billings. In ideal world, those two would match up. The difference is your is inflow infiltration. The yellow lines are recorded sanitary sewer overflow volumes by month. As we see them at SSO eighteen. So in general, you've seen a trend. We had a lot of rain. The blue dots are rainfall amounts in that month in that month. So in twenty nineteen, we had a lot of rain. Correspondingly, we had a lot of wastewater treatment flow flow and inflow and infiltration. Since we've been doing the lining project, we've seen a steady decrease. But I will say that Mother Nature is helping as well because we're in a drier period, which tends to pull these down too. The next slide. Is the same same concept. We're seeing all these flows, but we're looking at Lake Michigan's water levels. And this one's important because, you know, as everybody's aware, we've hit, you know, record levels in the lake and Manistee Lake. Which also corresponds to groundwater tables and. With these high groundwater tables, even last year. You know, we're still seeing this trend in a downward manner, which is, you know. Comforting and positive. So we like the trends where we're headed with it. We think, you know, we're getting some bang for the buck out of the work. Based on the metric of looking at the treatment plant. Switching gears. I just wanted to hit on that, you know, that everybody's aware of the Transportation Improvement Plan, but, you know, just to reiterate. We're always thinking about it. It's a very dynamic, continuously updated document. I work with Ed and Jeff on a regular basis. User ratings that come out each year from those Paser ratings. We can determine types of improvements and fixes for the streets. We use asset management techniques, which is not necessarily going right to the worst street and fixing it. It's really trying to get the overall system remaining service life extended out. And that means taking your streets that may be fair or good and really trying to get more life out of them as a whole, because you can make those dollars go a lot farther. But we are looking at those really poor streets and trying to fix them. And we're doing that by associating them with a lot with the utility projects. So we can leverage on the costs we're putting into water and sewer, you know, to get to help with the road costs. And then lastly, on this, we're always looking for grant funding. To help leverage our limited budgets as far as we can. We currently, just as a snapshot, we've got a category B grant application into M dot for local streets. And a category F application into M dot for major streets. These are fairly competitive grants, but we put them in. With the hope of having some success here. So we'll see how they turn out this year. Some of the twenty twenty street work that was done, Eighth Street, Second Avenue, First Avenue, Third Hastings were a couple that were worked on. These projects are primarily done, but we do have, we are still holding some retainees for punches. That we need to get finalized with a contractor before. The GIS system, both, just to hit on really quickly, you know, we've got a very robust GIS system working with the city since we came on board. I think it's utilized at a high level by city staff. And we could spend a whole session talking about it. If anybody's interested in coming to our office, I'd be happy to show some of the capabilities we have with our GIS system. But I what I wanted to hit on here was. With the Flint crisis and lead, lead rules that are out. There's been a push to determine what all the service leads are made of, what their what their materials are. We've been working closely with Bruce. And he's been doing just a fantastic job chasing those down and making determinations. And he's really. At least halfway or probably more than halfway through the system and determining materials. So he's well ahead of Eagle's schedule. And I think with some conversations I had with Jeff this morning, we may even be farther than that based on some. Other projects that we know copper went in the ground. So just one of the ways we're using GIS for the water system. On the wastewater side and stormwater side, again, we have a very detailed system with all the sewers and manholes and condition. Things we've done over the years, but most recently, the things we're working on are. The leads that go into the sanitary and storm sewers and. I mentioned earlier during the lining process, we're eliminating leads. We do that through dye testing, and that's allowed us to really figure out truly where the connections are. And so that's getting, we're leaving, kind of walking away from the main infrastructure and pushing out to the. To the services, you know, that are to the houses, which is. Really, you know, just a one more level we're getting in detail in the system. Lastly, on the GIS, we're we're always continuously updating it. We have projects that in the ground, developments, repair work, televising investigations, we find things. And we update those as we're made aware of them. As far as twenty twenty one projects go. The Riverbank project is underway. It's pretty, be pretty hard to miss that. They're they're off to a good start. We got a core permit. And they're building that. They're kind of going to, what's going to happen is they're going to build. Basically, all the way to the east, they're kind of going to build a road all the way to the east, and then they're going to work their way back out. So. They'll probably have the appearance that it's not complete for a while when you look right at over the on the lookout area. So it'll take them a while to get all the way out and all the way back. Where they actually clean it up and finalize the grades. The Jackson and Van Buren Street Project and Eighth Street Project Jeff mentioned that's going out for bid tomorrow. Bids have been coming in high, so we're crossing our fingers. If we get a good bid and we like the contractors, hopefully we can proceed with that work this summer and fall. Jeff mentioned rural development phase two, A and B. That project. Consists of the two parts, the Convenance Project, which is the large sewer that'll be placed on Seventh. And down Seventh and Ramsdale. That's looking to start in June. And then the the work at the plant, the Clean Water Recovery Facility. The site has been cleared, the topsoil's been stripped, and they're going to start de-watering the site so they can begin excavation. Once the site is de-watered, so that's on its way as well. Just a couple of snapshots of. Some work that's being done on the the revetment at. Riverbank Project, and then the one on the lower right is at the Clean Water Recovery Facility where the headworks building will be constructed. So with the clearing, so. So some of our priorities. Have our, I think our goal is to be consistent with city staff priorities and council priorities. And these have been, these are consistent with what we've had in the past. Our A to continue to focus on the tip, you know, and make sure we're leveraging dollars. With grant money and other infrastructure work to get as much as we can out of the limited street dollars we have. Working to reduce INI. We have these two large projects that are going to. Get rid of SSO eighteen, but we'll still have INI, and it costs money to treat water that shouldn't be in there. So that'll always be a long term goal in the system. The GIS system I mentioned, continue to update and work with GIS and asset management. Not just on streets, but on the water system, the sewer system, even on buildings. You know, we have a roofing project that's going on now that. As a result of looking into, you know, which, you know, timing wise and where to spend money on buildings. Also helping out with other projects. So we always talk a lot about water, sewer and streets. We're assisting the city with some park. Park work and park grants. There's the Marina, last part of the Marina we'd like to get funding for to finish that up. And so working with outside of the realm of just water streets and. And sewers. And then finally, again, leveraging grant dollars as a whole. Helping to identify those dollars and pursue them. So that we can extend or, you know, leverage the the limited budget we have for all the infrastructure work. That's really it.
Any question?
Mr. Middleton?
I have a question.
Sean, will you mention the Maple Street Bridge project and the timing of that?
So the Maple Street Bridge, you know, it requires inspections on every few years, different types of them. It's a movable bridge, so it's got higher level of scrutiny. During the last inspections and scoping was identified, there is maintenance work that needs to be done to the bridge. Which basically includes some steel. Some minor steel, you know, work replacement fixes, but it's it's mostly a painting project. So that project will need to get painted and because you need to have. You can't be opening and shutting the bridge all the time where you're working on it. It's most likely going to be a winter project. Where it will have to be open for periods of time and close for periods of time while they work on it. But it won't be susceptible to the boat traffic. That's the schedule to be let with M dot in October with the idea that the construction would happen this winter.
Thank you.
Any questions? On streets. For Jackson and Van Buren, we're starting to take bids now where the bid packages are going out to them. Are they gonna take total reconstruction like Quincy is going to need or? How are they gonna be constructed?
So they will be fully reconstructed because because we have a water main going in on both of those streets.
Okay.
We'll be doing underground infrastructure and A plus are in poor shape, so. Between those two things, we're gonna be doing full reconstruction of the section.
And then in twenty twenty two, say, a year from now, is that when you're gonna be taking bids for Quincy Cleveland? Washington Street and Memorial Drive?
Yes, Quincy Cleveland. Our goal would be to get that worked on in the. This late summer into the fall and early winter, so we can bid that. An ideal, a better bidding window, which is in, you know, January. So we'd be looking at Quincy Cleveland going out then. There's been, Jeff can elaborate on this, but on Washington. We're working with M dot and trying and they've they've had some budget issues and how they can assist with the detour. And pay help paying for those streets, so we're kind of working on a little bit of a backup plan to submit category F funds I mentioned earlier. To fund those projects if we can get funding from M dot in the detour route. So that would affect the schedule of those projects depending on which funding source comes through.
I know. Yeah, so. We submit, we received a three hundred and seventy five thousand dollar grant from. Well, I'm sorry. Well, we received a grant for Maple Street Bridge for that work. And the timing of that is scheduled for this winter, like Sean said. But is because in twenty twenty three, M dot is going to do a major structural rehab. Of Memorial Bridge over US thirty or US thirty one over the river. And we had also planned to upgrade Memorial Drive and Washington Street. Prior to the thirty one bridge rehab, because that'll be two more two primary street segments for the local detour. They had pledged financial support for the detour work for quite some time. So we've had it in the capital improvement program. For utility upgrades and of course, the paving upgrades for several years, and we still have that planned for twenty twenty two. But the thirty one bridge project is currently. Extremely over budget, and so the state is. Reduced its willingness to participate. So we're still working through that. We still have some time. But there's gonna be a lot of work on the north side in the next two years.
Okay, but Quincy and Cleveland would still.
Those are independent.
Twenty twenty two.
Yeah, those are independent and the funds are are allocated for Quincy and Cleveland. So that that should not be impacted by the other projects.
Okay, and then are we on time with the sewer? The wastewater treatment plant with the state? I don't know how many deadlines we have with them at different points.
Yeah, we so we've. We hit all of them. We had to get the construction one extended. It's needs to be completed by July of twenty. Twenty twenty two. So next July first is our deadline to get the construction completed. And then we have till September first to do a kind of a certification of the. Of the system, kind of hopefully get some rain events or do some testing. Induced testing maybe with flows from hydrants to see how it performs, so.
Yeah, and speaking frankly, when the state created those schedules, they knew that they were near impossible to meet the construction deadline. But they wanted it within the window of the existing or the or the upcoming NPDS permit. So because the city met every milestone and worked as diligently as possible. They actually offered and per and and granted an extension of that construction schedule.
Okay, and that's extended out to July twenty twenty two, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay. All right. Well, thanks. I appreciate that clarification. Thanks, guys.
Any other questions?
This is Mick. I've got a couple. Can you give us any update on Veterans Park and the work that was being planned for that side of the river?
So we submitted a grant application that was not successful. We did not get, it was very, very competitive here for trust fund dollars and we didn't make the cut. So it's in the bond and we're going to be resubmitting that. The timing with that is we need the rec plan in place, our five year rec plan. Which just ran out, so the county's in the process of updating that rec plan. And so when that's done, we will be able to resubmit the trust fund application. So it's a funding issue on the grant side.
Okay. And then, and I just wanted to comment that. You know, I do appreciate the fact that. The Spicer Group is more than just a contract for the city, that you truly are a community partner. You do do a lot. I noticed how many times that in groups that come to you for free advice and you are. Willing to help them with with things that they have as well as the sponsorship that you provide for the city. So on behalf of a lot of those private organizations, just wanted to say thanks.
Thank you. That means a lot.
Anybody else have any questions? I don't hear anything. You Sean for your time. Jeff, thank you also again. We'll move on now to Ms. Brown from the Housing Housing North for your presentation.
Thank you, and thank you for having me. I'm going to queue up my presentation here. One second. So for those of you who I have not met yet, and some of you I have, my name's Yarrow Brown, and I am the Executive Director of Housing North. I guess I can't claim the new card anymore because I've been here just about a year. But I wanted to introduce myself. I have been working with quite a few representatives in the city of Manistee and around the county. So I've been getting to know to know your county. So Housing North was formed about two and a half, almost three years ago now, to address the barriers to housing in our region. We were founded by Rotary Charities of Traverse City, the Fry Foundation and Networks Northwest, and we cover ten counties in Northwest Michigan. We have three legs of our stool, we like to say, our awareness, communication, advocacy and capacity and resources. For housing. So I'm gonna bring briefly go over these today. I know you want to probably get off the Zoom call and wrap up your meeting. And then mention a few things we're working on that are relevant to your community. So just to put it in context, I think we all understand the need in the region that there are many barriers to housing. But at Housing North, we also feel like there are some solutions, and that's what we're trying to work on right now, and I'll talk about a few of those today. Just to put in context, the need in our region in twenty nineteen, Nor Housing North partnered with Networks Northwest. To get a target market analysis to figure out what we really need in our community for housing, and this is shown graphically. You can see where Manistee Falls in relation, Manistee County falls in relation to the other counties. A lot of the need in our region, of course, is in Grand Traverse County, but there is a need in every one of our ten counties for increased housing. So this information too is all available on our website. So if I'm going fast and you really want to read this later at your leisure, we have these target market analysis reports. Both a larger version of it, comprehensive and then a summary. And this breaks it down by the need in the county, and then you can see that in Manistee, the city, a lot of that need is for rentals and homeownership. So it's the majority of the need in the county, but also if you look at the breakdown between sort of what is affordable or where the the. Dollars come in, in general, we like to say we need homes in our region that are less than two hundred thousand dollars. And rents that are less than a thousand to kind of cover the biggest gap in the need, but we have a need across all incomes and and price ranges. So let me see if this will go. Okay, the next thing I just want to mention, and I should thank you for endorsing our Homes for a Future campaign. Last year, you may remember Lisa Reyes, who was doing a lot of important work on your housing action plan. And when I started or right after I started, obviously, the pandemic happened, and so we are relaunching this campaign this year. And with that comes a communication toolkit and a housing ready checklist, which I believe you're already addressing and working on in your community. But these are available on our website and just wanted to thank you and make you aware. We are hoping that all ten counties will endorse, ten counties and then all of as many cities and and units of government we can will endorse the campaign. So so far, we have seven units of government and only over thirty organizations. And it's really a call to action in a public awareness campaign. We're not asking for money yet. Um, so the next thing I want to talk about is some of our policy initiatives. And we formed with the Home Builders Association, Michigan Municipal League, and some other partners like the Grand Rapids Chamber. We're part of an executive team to push some of our legislative initiatives at the state level. So this is something we began working on twenty twenty. And we have a group called the Housing Michigan Coalition. The link is on here and I can share this. So that you can sign up if you don't have time to write it down, but there are five bills that we're introducing and they're listed there, and I won't go into them in detail. Right now, but on Thursday, there will be a hearing at the Senate Committee on Economic Economic and Small Business Development. We will be hearing from the sponsors of these bills. A couple that I'll just mention is an employer supported housing tax credit. And then also a pilot legislation that would allow for payment in lieu of taxes to be approved when there is no no state or federal subsidy. So using other support for housing. So a lot of these. Are bipartisan, bicameral. It is not a partisan issue. We feel there's a shared challenge to address our housing and that there's no silver silver bullet. I won't, you know, to solve these issues, so I won't spend too much time on this, but if you want to learn more, we have a few webinars on our. On our Housing North YouTube channel, and we will be putting out calls to action for the Thursday meeting. Really, we need people to call and fill out a support, and I'll share the link. If you go on the Housing Michigan Coalition website, the link is there. Briefly, I'll just touch on capacity, which is one of the main reasons that I'm here today is to talk about our housing ready program. So what is the housing ready program and why do communities need this? We feel that because we do have a lack of economic development staff, our community development staff in our region. Housing has become such an issue, and we really need boots on the ground to address housing in each of our communities. It is a very complex issue, as you know. And in Charlevoix County, we piloted a program where we have a housing ready program director who's been on staff for about a year now. His name is Steve Schnell, and this was a partnership between the Community Foundation, the Fry Foundation, three cities, and then the county. And they support Steve's position for three years, and his main goal is to work with the three housing action groups in each of the city and the county. To help meet their housing goals and needs. So he is doing a lot of great work. We have some measurables since he's been on board and he's worked with at least eight planning commissions. This should be updated because we actually have worked on over four hundred new housing units that have been approved in Charlevoix County with his help. And is really working on facilitating, you know, discussions among all the partners with housing in that community. We also have a webinar, which I think we shared ahead of time on the housing ready program, if you want to watch that on our on our fun YouTube channel. And Steve is available for questions as well. So we are looking to expand this program and have been talking about it in Manistee County. So I just want to, you know, mention that this program is something that will help us make all of our communities housing ready. It's hosted by Housing North. The position would work for you and your community and address your housing needs. It's really guided by the community's goals for housing, and we hope to have as many partners to contribute to the position, including units of government, foundations and other community organizations. I've been working with a local group for the last year, and we do have some funding contributed, and I believe the city is considering this to support this position. The idea is to have it secured for three years, and I can answer questions about this at the end. And this would just be, you know, a summary of some of the steps of how it would work in your community. So the first thing is really to to see if this is something you want, see if it will meet the goals, see what partners can help support the position, and then work on developing. The position description and what the work work plan would be with the partners. The last thing I just want to mention is that we're working on building capacity for housing and bringing new tools to the region for housing. So we're talking about it as a as a housing conservancy, a concept where we would be able to support. Hopefully, funding someday for predevelopment and land acquisition costs, but also piloting some programs. A deed restriction program to ensure long term or year round residency, and then looking to expand community land trust in our region. We do have one up in Charlevoix and Emmett County, and that is one of the ways to lock in affordability. If you want to learn more about any of these tools, I'm available to talk about them at another time. And then I just wanted to mention two new things. This is a very complex slide, and I won't go into detail and get too dangerous. But through the Brownfield Redevelopment Act and using tax incremental financing, we're calling it Land Bank two point O. But in partnership with land banks and the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, there are projects that are underway right now that can use tax incremental financing to fill the gap in in housing. So if you do want to learn more about this tool, I would encourage you to talk to your land bank authority as well as the state land bank, who is a great resource. And the last thing I just want to mention is something that we're we're really excited about, and we're talking about a lot of communities is this idea of missing middle housing. Where you can get creative with how you meet the demand for housing and look at different ways that you can incorporate this into your community. There's a link on the screen for missing middle housing, and if you want any examples, I can share those through Steve. He has some examples of where these have been implemented, and I believe you're also looking at some of these changes in in your county and city. So I just want to thank you for your time. I know that was kind of a whirlwind of a presentation, but I am here for questions and just want to let you know that we are a resource. And and a partner for you and look forward to working with you. Well, thank you very much.
Do you have any questions, Council?
I'm just curious on how you get your numbers, like, for example, if you figure out there's a need in Manistee for three hundred and two rental units. And ninety four homes. How do you how do you find those numbers out? How do you figure it out?
So I did not find those out. A very awesome consultant did. It's called a Land Use USA. So she has a whole system, you know, that she uses. These are a lot of these are estimates and projections. So when a project does come or is in front of a, you know, developer is going to develop, they do need to get more accurate numbers. This is just sort of a projection to see how to meet the need, but it reflects people who live here currently and people who would move here if there was housing. So. That is what I know. I was not here when the study was done. It was done before my time, but I can answer more questions offline about it, too.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
This is Mick Schumaski. So how does Housing North differentiate between the different needs of cities, counties and municipalities? Because there's obviously a big difference between Traverse City and Manistee or rural Manistee County and the city. So how do you differentiate on how and what types of housing that you would recommend or or try to support?
Well, I mean, really with the housing ready person is the first step with Steve, you know, getting into the community and being able to work and find out what their needs are. I mean, I think it mostly is trying to meet the needs and the goals of that community. So there's housing opportunity mapping that we do. You know, trying to encourage development to happen where there's existing utilities first and and existing infrastructure. And then trying to, you know, just see and figure out, you know, some communities, like, for example, in Mesaki County, there's more of a need for season or senior housing and transitional housing. You know, so really, it's just kind of diving in and getting to know each community and finding out what their needs are and how to help.
And that's really done with that that boost on the ground person that you're recommending?
Yes, or it's me. Yes, or it's me, where we don't have them. So right now, we're a staff of two. We're hoping to become a staff of three in Emmett County, and then, you know, as as we can, yeah, so that the goal is to try to have a person or some shared positions between counties to really focus on all things housing.
I have a quick question, too.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Oh, sorry. Did I cut you off, Mick? I didn't mean to.
I was just going to ask, have you had an opportunity in the past year to actually work with our local planning and or organizations like our our Community Foundation, Habitat for Humanity, to to kind of address some of our needs and and kind of give us a a kind of a blueprint to where we can start looking to improve our housing?
Well, you already have a housing action plan in the city of Manistee. So yes, I've been meeting with all of those people probably every month or two and trying to mostly figure out a path forward for the housing-ready program. But I do talk to the planners regularly, and then if I do have projects or people who call me, we try to coordinate, you know, who is the best best person suited to answer that question. So I'm I'm doing it as much as I can right now, and we're trying to meet regularly and 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 help and support. And we do have a grant right now where we can help, right, in a limited ability to form a housing action group, if that's the interest of of the county. So a local group that of many, many partners that would help kind of guide a housing-ready position or be there to help similar to the Little Traverse Bay Housing Partnership or some of the groups in Charlevoix County that would focus on housing with many partners.
And and my last question is, is housing-ready person, who would their direct supervisor be?
So in the in the case of Emmett and Charlevoix, there's different examples. It's essentially me, but there is an executive committee that sort of steers of the partners who are funding the position, and then they really report to the Housing Action Group, in the case of Emmett and Charlevoix County, but we we would address and figure out how that would work in Manistee County. But they would be an employee of Housing North with the direct scope of work in a contract. We would contract with each of the partners.
Thank you.
Okay, I've got another question. Sorry. When you talk about utilities and infrastructure, are you talking about broadband? Because that's a really important component to being able to do developments.
Yeah, that would be included. I mean, I think really to start, you know, trying not to, I guess, because we have a lot of natural resources, you know, trying to protect and not impact those first and think about where there is existing, you know, water, sewer, utilities, those things. But I think broadband should be included in that as well.
I think people could live with a well and a septic system, but they can't live without broadband for too much longer.
I would agree, especially in our ability to work remotely and do Zoom. Yeah, exactly.
Anybody else? Hearing none. Thank you very much, Ms. Brown. We appreciate your time.
Thank you for having me.
We'll move on to concerns and comments, citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance via phone shall be recognized by the city clerk for comments limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Each person in the waiting room will be called by the last four digits of their telephone number. Heather, do you want to take care of that and move on to officials, staff, and then council members, please?
Sure. I don't see anybody who's on the phone, but we have two members of the public that are joining with either a computer or iPad. So if you have a public comment, please unmute yourself now and state your name and address. Does anybody have a public comment? Hearing none. One to officials and staff. City manager?
Nothing at this time.
City attorney?
Nothing, Heather. Thank you.
Finance director?
Nothing. I got it. Thank you.
DPW director?
Nothing further. Thank you.
Police chief?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Fire chief?
Nothing further, Heather. Thank you.
City engineer?
Nothing further, Heather. Thank you.
Let's see. I think the assessor is gone. Planning and zoning?
Nothing over here, Heather. Thank you.
Councilmember Bachman?
Nothing, Heather. Thank you.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes. Are we going to be meeting in person the first week in June for our first council meeting, or do you think that'll come later?
We I know that there's a there's two council members that won't be in town probably. So I think we're going to continue with virtual meetings for the first meeting in June. And right now, the inclination is to go back to in-person meetings, starting with our work session in June, absenting dissenting notes from council.
That would be okay with me, since I'm one of the two. I don't know who the other one is, but.
But that's our tentative plan.
Okay, Councilmember Sullivan?
Um, I actually have a couple. I actually have quite a few things I wanted to ask. So the letters that we received regarding the motel down at the lake, do those also go to the planning commission?
Yes.
Okay, and then I also wanted to get something on like a work session or something with a crosswalk on First and Maple. I think that it's important, especially if we're building that big of a hotel down there. It's going to bring in a lot of traffic, so I think that it's needed. And the next thing, have we figured out that, I think it's the ARP funds, like what we can use those for?
We staff just met today and started brainstorming on some ideas. What we want to do is bring it to council at the very latest, the July workshop. We're we're trying to see if we can get it around for the June workshop. So we've got additional guidance, but we still don't know how much money we're going to get.
Okay.
We hope to have that this week.
Okay, and then the last thing, so we were working on putting in the ordinance for the long-term rentals that they had to follow the BLIGHT ordinance. And I have some concerns with SafeBuild. I feel like it's not being taken seriously, especially since he's only done thirty-six inspections. Like, I'm not good at math, but if we have eleven hundred rentals, he needs to do at least, what, three sixty, three seventy a year? And for it to be almost June, and he's only done thirty-six and only works two days a week, I think that's a problem. I think that he's, it's, we're not going to get anything done, so I'd like to revisit the contract or or something. I I have some concerns with this. I think that it's not helping us, and the whole point of putting the rentals following the BLIGHT ordinance was to take some pressure off the police department, and that is not going to happen at all. He doesn't have, he doesn't have the manpower or the time to do that. And that's all I got.
I met with Steve on Monday, and at council's direction, asked him for some input on, for lack of better terms, incentives for landlords to keep their places in good shape. And so he's going to get back with me on that. We had, we had a good discussion.
They basically already have their incentives because they got to collect rent and not clean up their houses. Like, how much more incentive do they possibly need? I mean.
Well, what, when, if you remember, council discussed going possibly to two years cycles on inspection every two years, then there was some discussion about could we, those those landlords that pass, as an example, their inspection, the first shot, maybe they don't need to get inspected for three.
Oh, absolutely. I agree with that.
We're working, we're working through that right now.
But even if you leave it at three years, he's never going to get it done. We're almost to June, and he's only done thirty-six. He's never going to get the first round done. It's it's not possible working two days.
I've got it noted. I'll see what he's got to say.
Okay, thank you.
I thought we were going to meet with the landlords and all that for some work session.
Last I remember, the council asked me to work with, get some suggestions from SafeBuilds. They've saved built on incentives because it didn't seem like there was a lot of interest or enough interest to go to two years and maybe come up with some incentives for the to exact some compliance.
Okay.
Right now.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Okay, then we all got this letter. I know every council person got it from the Parks Department complaining about that they don't have a budget. It disappeared over the years, yet I've got a budget in the budget book. It goes apart, private as a budget. Are you talking with these people to get this problem situated?
We'd get, we've done two things. Jeff and I met with the Chair and Vice Chair, I think it was last week. They had some concerns above and beyond that. They have a they have an opinion that they that they are required to report directly to the council and not through a liaison.
Right.
Member. So what we we had a discussion, and we've got, we've got that slated for the June work session to discuss that. I've also got an opinion from the city attorney on how we're doing things.
Right, I got that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac?
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Schumansky?
The only thing is on the kind of a little bit on State Bill, I would like to do a little bit more discussion on why we are being so adamant about the permitting for things like replacing toilets, a window siding, some of the things that has not been done in the past and is not being done in the county and in other parts of the state. So I I really have some concerns and issues that, you know, again, if it's if it's law, why isn't everyone following it? And if it's a gray area, then why are we being the ones to take it to the higher level? And again, kind of going back to Ms. Sullivan, we're we're saying, you know, you know, we should be more focused on inspections than on making sure that people are are getting permits for for, in some cases, minor things. And and again, I I don't disagree with all of it. I think certainly we do want to make sure that we're protecting our residents with, you know, roofing inspections. But if you're replacing a window in your house and it's not changing the the size of the scope, I I think it's asking a lot for somebody to spend a couple hundred dollars to have an inspector come out. The same thing with changing the toilet. Anybody who buys a toilet that doesn't meet current specifications, it's got to be has bigger problems than than just replacing their toilet, because I I went to Home Depot and looked, they don't have a single toilet that doesn't meet the specifications of two and a half gallon flush. And why would you want to buy one that would be, would take fourteen gallons instead of two and a half? So I I just have some issues with some of the things that we're following up on and and kind of making is an issue. Overall, I I think they're they're probably doing us a service, but there, you know, again, some of the focus, I think, may be a little bit challenging, especially all at once.
Okay, I will schedule for a work session.
Thank you.
Mayor Solinsky?
I have nothing further, except everybody get out, enjoy this nice weather we're having. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I make motion.
Aaron?
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. We're adjourned. Have a good evening.